Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome back from the holiday break. Very excited to go ahead and jump back into all of the great things that we have going on. Welcome, Tracy, for being back to lead us into this discussion that we have. Today, we're going to be having our workshop on the educational planning aspects of the long-range conversations that we've been having about school balance and facility usage in programs. After that, we'll go into our closed session, and then we'll have our formal meeting at 7:00. So, without further ado, Dr. Ben.
Thank you. Dr. Gabriel, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen. I think you've captured the opening in terms of this. We committed to periodic updates with the board as we go through the educational planning process. Today, Mr. Richter is going to share some of the information we've gleaned through our community forums that we've held, and some other thoughts that are emerging through this work. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Tracy.
Dr. Gabriel, Dr. Ben, thanks, and members of the board, thank you. First of all, happy holidays. I hope you enjoyed your Thanksgiving breaks. So, we do have quite a bit to cover today. We're going through this. Let's see if I can get through. There we go. What we're going to talk about today is, first of all, a recap of the Lake Taylor K-8 middle school meeting that was conducted about a month ago. And then, we're going to look at some current and future educational initiatives that we've been discussing for quite a while, and where we stand with those, and hopefully have some discussion about where we want to go with those, and start to kind of shape them a little more for the rest of the year. What's on the table right now are pretty big planning initiatives across the board. Even though it doesn't look like it's a long list, the list that occurs because of it is a long list. And, you know, the direction that we will need to go will have to be decided fairly quickly in order, if there's any action going to be taken, to make sure that communities are communicated with in the appropriate time manner. So, what we're going to start with is just a recap of the meeting that we had at -- I'm not sure, am I controlling this thing? Sorry. Oh, I got to just put it up there. Okay, so, when we met with the community, we had three discussion points that were the focus of what we wanted to talk about. And even though we didn't have the answers to all of them, because we just don't have the answers yet until we take some further direction on it, is curriculum program delivery of a K-8 model, and what that means. The facilities, including the condition, capacity, utilization of the buildings, what it would take to renovate versus replace buildings, and making sure that we had that information in front of them, then also talking about transportation. You know, three major operational portions of how to implement moving forward. So, the timeline behind this is that in 2017, and if I look back, and I did look back, in September of 2017, we started the initiative, starting to talk about the consolidation of Fairlawn and Popular Halls into Lake Taylor Middle School. In four community meetings that we had in the fall of 2017, this was presented. We had several board updates where this has been on the board agenda, at least to talk about, on recapping enrollment, capacity, condition, all those things. So, this has continuously been on there. However, it's just been a point of discussion. And really, in the community meetings we had, and the surveys that we had, had received very little kind of feedback on any of it. And so, but it had been online. We had online surveys for both the spring or the fall of 2017, spring, and then also this year, we've had a survey online for this. And you're going to see some of the responses to that, too. But part of it was about this campus Stella, St. Helena, Popular Halls, Fairlawn, Ingleside, previously had students at Lake Taylor, and looking at that to see, you know, what's going on. Now, the impetus for this was declining enrollment at the middle grades for Lake Taylor, and to sustain a middle grades program. That was equivalent of other schools that had enrollments of 8,012,000. As decisions were made about feeder patterns into Lake Taylor, and how that would continue to decline, so with campus Stella extending out to be a K-8 building, that feeder from that area would then decline out. We still had Ingleside coming in, but the decision then for St. Helena to be moved to a closer middle school, logistically, and to feed into Maury, and to work towards board initiative of diversity, St. Helena then gets moved. And so, all of a sudden, we're starting to see this kind of rapid decline of enrollment that occurs, to a point where this year's enrollment, the official enrollment that came in at Lake Taylor is 450, right? That's the official count. It could be a little different today. And so, trying to figure out how to utilize a building of this magnitude in the right way. And not that the building and capacity should dictate the program, but one of the big things that is talked about is capacity in this, in the district, in the division, in particular at the middle grades level. And again, just to kind of reiterate what that means, is that, you know, we calculate there's about 7,300 seats in the district for middle school students, pure middle school students, and there's about 5,100 kids. So, that's about 2,200 empty seats at the middle grades levels right now. That's basically two middle schools in capacity that's being operated. And really, the ones that press, that are kind of, that get talked about the most are Roughner and, in this case, Lake Taylor. And part of that, trying to get to the solution about how to use really good buildings, because, you know, Lake Taylor, you know, even though the number is big to repair the building, as we went in and walked the building and to do an analysis of what you're going to talk about, you learn to fall in love with a Lake Taylor building. It was built to educate kids, and the space types and how it's designed to both bring kids together and separate kids is a really good design of a building. It has some wear and tear. It's an old building, but it's got good bones. And it's a structure that's not going away. And so, how do we utilize a really good structure, a really good neighborhood, and a very accessible part of the city? And so, that all kind of comes into play. So, as we went down this discussion and tried to talk about all kinds of scenarios to do that, and I'm going to talk about those other options out there, we got to this point, where do we create a K-8 building? And there's been a lot of discussion, you know, with Dr. Ben and her staff about creating a K-8 opportunity, you know, versus a middle school opportunity, and what are the benefits and challenges of that? Because there's always going to be benefits and challenges of a pure middle school program versus a K-8. And so, this is how we, when we went out to the community, we started to talk about and give that background. You know, we talked about the curriculum and program delivery, and making sure that each year of a K-8 is a bridge between that elementary and that middle school, trying to make sure that curriculum is continuous, and how do we do that? Also, keeping a community together in the same building for nine years does have some benefits to it. It brings back together, you know, a school that was separated by grades, K-2 and a 3-5 building. But it allows for that kind of vertical collaboration to happen between elementary and middle grades and education. And at a size of a building where middle school delivery models can still be very robust in a K-8 building. So, one of the benefits that we see is that the transition is seamless. You know, I think that one of the, in education in general, one of the toughest transitions to do is a 5th grade to 6th grade middle school transition, for a lot of reasons. Developmental, and we see that in any building change, there is some backing up of educational attainment, and then you have to catch up, and then you surpass it. But we can start to create this opportunity between the two grade levels earlier, and try to assure, you know, more success at the middle grades level. So, the conditions of the facility. Now, HBA conducted a facilities condition last fall, and finished last spring. And what it shows in the facility condition index, and again, just to get people apprised of what a facility condition index is. A facility condition index is basically the cost of a renovation versus a replacement of a building. So, how much does it cost to renovate versus replace that very same building? Now, an FCI is a bit deceiving in the fact that likely, you would not replace an elementary school to have a 300 capacity again. There's little efficiency in that. And so, but it tells you what the current state of what it would take to fix that building. And if you look at them, and the general rule is called a two-thirds rule, that when a building gets to two-thirds, it's renovation versus replacement cost, then we're talking about real short lifespans in renovation. And so, you're taking dollars that, instead of replacing for 50, 60, or 70 years, you're putting dollars in to the last 20 or 25 years. And so, it's up to the division, then, how to prioritize your dollars into renovation versus replacement, and where dollars are best spent to do that. So, if you look at it, all buildings are at that two-thirds. There's no question. But then, you start looking structurally. And I've said this all along. If you walked into Popular Halls, you'd think it's probably the cutest building you ever walked into. The staff, the administration, does an amazing job of keeping this building in pristine condition when you're looking at it. But walk in when there's a hard downpour. Walk in when it's 20 degrees with a 10-degree wind chill, or walk in when it's 95 degrees with 110 humidity. And things start to change, and that impacts your day. And so, we know that that happens, and we know that happens at a lot of schools around the division. This doesn't hold the patent on it. But in this case, where, you know, Popular Halls ends up being of condition, pure physical condition, the ninth worst building in the division. And Lake Taylor has a substantial amount of dollar amount that would have to go into it. But once again, an investment into a building like this, that is built the way it's built, has a longer-term benefit to it. Structurally, that is one of your finest buildings in the division. And so, that's good to start with. And so, you always think about, you try to balance the two. And it has capacity in it, and it has room for flexibility. It's on a great site. It's got, you know, great traffic in and out. It's all the things that you'd like to see on a school site, regardless of if it's a middle school, elementary school, or even a high school, for that matter. So, there's a lot of factors that go into this. And again, this is a number that's a number, that if you wanted to fix a building or replace them, this is a general cost towards it. Now, what this does not include, this number does not include, is any educational space improvement. So, if you wanted to fix the art room, to make it a real art room, add dollars. If you want to, you know, convert space into STEM space or to other kind of educational space, add the dollars into it. So, that does not include any sort of educational improvement to the building. Enrollment utilization. In these buildings where we see the total capacity, the estimated under 900 K-8 students in the fall of 2019, all current 6th and 7th grade, what we propose is that all 6th and 7th graders that attend Lake Taylor can continue. There's no sense in disrupting the educational experience that students are having. There would be enough room in the building. But we also estimate that the population moving forward, with Ingleside coming out of the theater, would be about 750 students. And again, we're talking about a building that has a capacity, even with elementary in it, you know, approximately, you know, we've got about 1,100 seats in this building. And so, we're going to have room in this building as we go through. We do anticipate that in the first year, that portables that currently exist, and we've also talked about underutilized portables that are newer in the division to be moved to this site, can also be used. They've been used in the past, and they've been used effectively. And so, and on the site like this, they're protected. What I love about the portables of this building is that when students walk out of the building, they don't have exposure to the world. They're in the back of that building, they're protected, and it's a secure, possible transition as you can have when you have portables. Everybody would like to have it covered a little bit sometimes, but here's a nice tree canopy there, too, for you. But we have to invest, and we have to take advantage where we can. Now, this is a short-term problem. But we have enough capacity in this building. Did I do something there? I don't know how I would have done that, sorry. Let me go to the next one. Ah, there we go. Okay. So, but moving forward, there's enough capacity in the building to do that. Now, what we did was, we did an analysis of the building and walked through the building to see what we would have to do to make this building a viable K-8 building, educationally and in somewhat, in some things, condition-wise. So, this is the current state of the building. And actually, you have this in front of you on a big 11 by 17, so you don't have to look at it down there. But some of the things that we talked about in this building is, once again, what you can see in a building like this is it does provide clear separation of space. You go one side, you go the other, and you can separate elementary to middle school kids. One of the big concerns, as you'll see in the comments that we have from the citizens out there, is, you know, "I'm a little worried about my kindergartner being in the same school as a 7th and 8th grader." Well, that's a concern everywhere in K-8 world. But there are, I can't even count how many K-8 schools in this country. And it is the culture of the K-8 and the operational behavior of K-8 that makes it successful, obviously, when it comes to those kind of things. But separate when you can, because it's appropriate. Age-appropriate separation is there. This building offers that. Go right, go left, go upstairs, go downstairs, and then you can separate even front to back. And so, it offers some opportunity to do that. However, there are improvements in this building that would have to be made in order to accommodate an appropriate K-8 education. So, if we look, and I'm going to let you just keep on the map, but I'm going to kind of go through this, because I just want to give you an overview of kind of the things that we had talked about. You know, in the front of the building, we have art rooms, and there's some makeshift resource rooms that have been, there's been a wall added here and there that, you know, facilities may or may not known about it sometime, because that happens in buildings all the time where you need a wall somewhere. So, in the front of the building, there's art rooms that are easily converted with cabinetry and furniture, and cabinetry and furniture and some equipment. Those art labs on the first floor could be converted to science labs. That way, you have science on the first floor on what would be, looking at the map, the left side of the building. There would be conversion to some storage and into classrooms that we have, that are, again, currently makeshift walls, that have been used to separate some space. Some of the big things, and honestly, those are pretty easy conversions. An art room to a science room is not a hard conversion, because they have the same water, drainage, all those things, the plumbing is there for you. When you get to the back of the building is where we start to see some real possible changes. If you go to the back of the building and you go to the special education space, there is a low incident space in that building where half the room currently is storage. And so, the teacher in that building, I will tell you, next time you see her or talk to her, she deserves a pat on the back every day. She works hard to make sure she uses the space as well as she has it. She has a very small laundry room and a very small restroom there. And the storage is almost nonexistent. And so, she, a few years ago, she thought she was going to get a lift chair, which are in the ceiling that are hooked in, and that just never occurred because of budget reasons, and understandably, budget reasons. And so, she makes do. The room next to it is a more high-incidence special education room, so we don't have the need for the special equipment. However, there is no storage in that room either. So, and then, if you go across the hallway, next to the tech lab, there's been space that's been converted into offices. There's running water in that area, but what we thought would happen is that if you took that side of the building and you made it, if you made the back there art and science, the kind of an art and science area and the technical area, so you would convert the special ed, current special ed into your computer lab space, and then convert the current office space that they're into two art rooms, for two art rooms for the elementary and middle school programs. Then, you could take then, the far right of the back of the building, and take those three rooms that are currently the, I'm sorry, currently the computer labs, which have an appropriate amount of square footage, and convert those into your special ed classrooms. Now, the challenge here, so if you look on the right-hand top, where I guess it'd be like 2:00 on the building, where that red is marked in there, there's an appropriate amount of square footage. This actually would be one of the bigger challenges. I think one of the challenges is currently, there's a drop-off on that side of the building where the current special ed is. But it's a straight down the hallway, there's not, it would just be going down the hallway a little further to get them to their space. But they would never have to go into the front doors where there's not really accessibility back there. It's a straight hallway, the drop-off is already back there. So, that's the challenge of this one, is that they would have to go another 60 feet to get to their classroom down a straight hallway. Go ahead. Did you have a question? Go ahead, yeah, please, please, yeah.
Did the rule change about not housing K-1 and 2 on the seventh floor?
There's, it's always been, it's not a law to do that.
Whoa, they made us.
But in this case, in this case, we don't have to do that. We've got K-1 on the first floor.
We do, I must be reading it wrong, because I was looking at, I'm sorry.
So, we have classrooms on the bottom floor, and then on the second floor.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so kindergarten has always been, that has been the suggested first grade, unless it's just recently changed. I've not heard that first grade rule, law, not in law.
Well, fire marshal law. I mean, we changed the whole Larrimore configuration.
Yeah, then it has to be local code. And we'll look into that. We'll certainly look into that on local code, then.
All right, and I just was.
Sure, absolutely. That's a great clarification. But, yeah, but the intention would be, on the first floor on the right, is to keep the lower grades on that lower floor.
Okay.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you.
So, and I think that, the other thing is that when we think about, obviously, when we think about the young kids, we think about, we think about restrooms, and we think about those facilities, too. And so, those are things that we can convert. We don't, there is, other than pre-K, there's some belief out there that, well, and I know my house never had a small toilet to train my daughter, but for some reason, schools have to have lower toilets. I don't know why. But it's not the real world they're in. So, we make bathroom conversions, and we do that, because schools have to be adaptable. And I know that's kind of, I know that's, I'm in public speaking, but that's the truth of it. So, but we also know that pre-K is the one that you need, and we'd like to have in kindergarten in-class restrooms also. We know that, too. So, those are things that could be more longer-term goals that we do to this building. And I keep, for some reason, this keeps advancing over. Go ahead.
So, I'm sorry. So, in this design that you have, do you or do you not incorporate the smaller-sized commodes for the children in the classroom?
Tiny toilets.
No.
No. Are there, do we accommodate for a bathroom in the classroom?
So, currently, not in the short term, because we wouldn't have time to make that conversion. However, in the long term, we would try to do that.
Okay.
Because remember, in those lower rooms, we have art in some of those and some science. There's water running. That's the challenge. So, we're not running into, and you see those small, if you, like, see the, like, the white in between the greens right there? Those are spaces where we can incorporate that kind of, make those accommodations.
Okay. So, are the orange and the green, is that where you're putting the K in one?
That, just the orange, on the right-hand side. Remember, we want separation, so we'd like to keep lower grades to the right of the building, and upper grades to the left of the building.
So, the green is?
Correct.
Is upstairs. No.
There's two stories. This would be the first-floor view, and then the next one, I'm sorry, then the next one would be the second floor. I cannot get this thing to.
But when I looked at that, it looked, that's why I said.
So, this one is the second floor, right here.
H4 and 5.
Yeah.
Right. And that's why I asked, because I saw the green that said K to 5, but there's no K up here.
Yeah, right.
For first grade, the K to 1.
And this is second floor.
So, it starts with grade 2.
Correct. And, once again, depends on cohorts. You'll do a little switching around, but, you know, what we tried to figure was for the current grades that are in there, and to accommodate good class sizes. So, we're not, we don't have big class sizes. So, again, some, there'll be a year where that second grade turns into a third-grade classroom, or vice versa, because of cohorts. And you've been in that situation, too. But the clear thing is, we want to keep elementary on one side of the building, and middle grades at the other side of the building. Yes, ma'am?
Second floor, top left, on the left side.
Uh-huh.
What grades are we looking to put in those four rooms?
So, that would be actually that conversion of 5, 6, kind of moving that way.
That's what I was hoping.
So, 5th grade will kind of bleed over a little bit. And so, we do see that that'll happen some.
8 is all down the bottom.
Which is probably, yeah, because all the science is down there, and so, and it'll lend itself to a more team configuration, or grade-level team configuration. And putting those sciences and converting, and this is why, you know, keeping that, those, converting those art rooms into science rooms back there, keeps that middle grades more contained into their core classrooms. Now, so, some of the questions that got asked at the community meeting were, for instance, is there enough space for music and art? And then, gymnasium, and so, those extra curriculars. Remember, this building was designed for 1,200 students with one gym, for middle school curriculum. It has to take gym all the time. Elementary delivery models can be different. You don't necessarily have to take gym every day. You can, you know, you just need to get the minutes in a week. And so, it's an operational. In the music space, you have a full choral room and a full band room. Now, depends on the middle school curriculum. But if I have a 6th grade, 7th, and 8th grade band, unless I'm going to offer four other band programs, I've got four empty periods of a band room that I do not want to use 50% of the time. We just make music space in it. And then, the same with the choral room for elementary music. And so, we're, we can balance it, or in time, we can extend out, if we had to build more music space. I'm not sure why you would have to build more music space, unless you want to leave rooms empty 40% of the time. Yes?
So, and then, how would orchestra fit into that configuration?
Same thing. So, yeah, so in the same space. And the band room is, actually, the band room here is a pretty significant space room. It needs some sound upgrades and some soundproofing upgrades. So, it's, it does need some electrical stuff in it. The sound system is antiquated, and the sound in the room needs to be just deafened up a little bit. Carpet, been in there since maybe it opened? I don't know. I mean, it's been in there a while.
That's pretty gross.
It's, it could be changed. But, so, we would do, and there's some, those cosmetic things are certainly kind of in the underlying of this. We were trying to show the big picture. But if orchestra's in there, same thing. As long as, again, when you're doing elementary music and art and gym, what you're doing is an operational thing in scheduling, and how many times you're there a week. But this building was accommodated to hold 1,200 middle school students, and to suggest that there's not enough space to do programmatic things and use the space to its full potential, that's what we're trying to do. We can't continue to use classrooms or these spaces 40 or 50% of the day. There's just not, that's not efficient. And we don't, we have plenty of square footage to do that. Now, once again, if operationally, the programs grow, then we look at additions down the road. And again, the great part about this building is, right and back, there's room to grow on this site. So, if there's ever had to be because of program growth, if you've got capital dollars, then we do it. But I think right now, there's, I think there's an appropriate amount of space in here. Yes?
So, the feedback that you received from parents and community stakeholders, this was one of the topics that they brought up. And how would we, aside from them viewing today's presentation, how are we going to get back to them what these ideas are as far as space utilization and creative scheduling, so that they can feel assured that we've taken their feedback into consideration, and then have thoughtfully planned for it?
Sure.
How are we going to get back to them on that?
So, the meeting that we had was a good meeting to get some feedback from. Now, there's a lot of verbal feedback, so hard to capture, as you all know. We'd like to have a lot more written down. We didn't get any written comments that night. We had opportunity to write down. We didn't get any handheld-in written comments that night. We did leave it, we reopened the survey, as was requested. We got 14 comments. And, but, knowing that we were going to come back, it was said that we need to come back, and this is a continuous community discussion, hoping that we would get more feedback. Now, I'm sure there's plenty of feedback happening in the way back here that I can't hear, but the website, the survey's still open.
Okay.
It continues to be open. And so, we want to leave it open for that feedback to go back to answer those questions.
And if I can, we're also, will be working on a communications plan of how we can push this information out. Our goal today was to bring what we had heard and the little bit of written that we had received to the board, to share with you, to get your feedback and some additional direction. And then, we will push this out in a communications plan method going forward. So, that's our goal. We're going to have a very active, we're going to activate a very strong web presence around the educational planning also, so.
Madam Chair. I did have a couple of questions.
Yes, that's fine.
So, just so I may have clarity, so this is for next, beginning next school year?
If the board chose to start for next year, yes.
If the board chose to go.
Yes.
Consolidating into one building here. I, I would assume with the kindergarten and so forth, we would probably, the playground from one of the other schools or something, we'd replace that there. When I'm looking at the figures and the numbers that you have here, which are just on, I guess, some basic cosmetic structural things, is it changing walls? I mean, that's what's included in there. Can you just clarify for me what's in that number?
So, okay, so the numbers that you saw is an overall condition, okay? We wouldn't have to, I mean, and all that is mechanical, electrical, those kind of things. Things that need systems upgrade. That will be on your maintenance list anyway. The conversions that we're talking about, and we anticipate these conversions, and Mike Ross from HBA will go out and confirm these numbers, we estimate these conversions to be somewhere in the $2 to $3 million range. Now, currently, ironically enough, Poplar Halls has $2 million scheduled for a roof replacement. That is allocated already for that building. And so, and that was, I was told that today, so that's not making up a number. It just happens to be that building's going to have that much put into it. And so, again, there's dollars allocated for capital projects, improvement projects. So, this is one. But what you saw today is roughly that number, which will be some condition improvement because we're going to do some electrical and technology upgrades in there. But a lot of it will be programmatic adjustment for this building.
Yeah, I mean, to want to look at this, I mean, I know we're, we're moving to the fall and that's what the board decides we go to. We, we have some dollars to make some adjustments. But I guess what's the long-range plan that you're proposing here? Is it to, because I know you said, I heard that this school has good bones.
It does.
But it's an old-looking school. It's been around for a while. So, what's the long-range plan? Is it to come in and do a full remodel at some particular point? Yeah, and then we, and if, I guess to clarify on what I heard, you said that this isn't changing any of the educational things that we're talking about. Because we haven't put the dollar figures to that.
Not on that one.
Not on that one. So, just kind of, you know, what is, you know, the long-range, you know, we, we move this, we get this trigger going, but are we talking about five years, six years? I mean, what's the big picture?
You know, I think that one of the reasons that the, the facility assessment was conducted was to give not only the school board, but city council kind of a, a view of what's out there. You know, what's the real, and, and honestly, it's even hard to call it the real number. Because what is a real number? If I, if I were to replace this building, that number changes. You know what I mean? So, what it does is it helps us prioritize. I'm afraid the answer is the amount of funding you have and the priority it comes onto the list. And so, you have, you have two high schools that have a priority above this, that are have, that could have up to a 150 or $200 million tag with renovation or replacement. Those are big numbers. And so, Lake Taylor at a 68% falls midway kind of through your facilities list when it comes to condition. However, we know that there are priorities within that building that need to be taken care of. Now, the mechanical system was just repaired. Now, we could spend, what, $3 to $5 million on the mechanicals in that building if we wanted to and just replace the entire system. But the repairs were enough to maintain a longer life in it. And so, it, it's working. What I, what I get afraid of though, is that at a 55-year-old building, those components that are in there, we're going to start losing the ability to find parts and, and the replacement of those, and then costs just drive up. And so, I'm afraid I don't have a great answer for you as far as time goes. What I do know is that we can make these modifications and we can focus our dollars more on the life safety pieces that we need, that we need to focus on. The good news is, in this situation, is that in time, the portables will drop off, which means we don't have the expense of an outdoor expense of maintaining. That's, that's helpful for that site.
Is that based on your projections, student population?
Yeah, with the numbers that will come in. Unless we decide, well, unless we decide that there's another feeder that needs to stay in this. So, those will help keep costs down in that building. But I think that, in the $3 million investment, we will make a big improvement that will be visual and actually will help the condition in those spaces, especially on those backend spaces.
So, I guess help me with this one. That with the two schools coming offline?
Yep.
What's the savings and operational cost to the district?
So, and, well, there's, this is a two-step answer, I'm afraid, and I'm sorry for that too.
Not a problem.
There's, it's, yeah. You'll, I think what you learn, and I think, you know that I have a long answer to some things. The idea would be to keep Fairlawn online.
Okay.
Okay? And then to move, currently, one of the ideas is to move the Easton pre-K program into the Fairlawn building, which means pre-K would come out of that building. That, the condition of that building, of the Easton building, is actually the worst, the eighth worst-conditioned building in your district. So, you would be taking that building offline, which again, is about a $9 million repair. And you would be utilizing Fairlawn, which is actually a more accessible building for pre-K. And has more space and gives us an opportunity to put general ed, education, pre-K with special ed, pre-K, which gets it a peer-appropriate learning environment. That's great news. So, we would actually take Easton and Poplar Halls offline. So, those would be the two buildings we would take offline for the division. To about this equal cost. Okay?
Yeah.
Would you finish quick?
My, my may jump to another thing, and it might be for Doc Boone here.
I was going, if I could, under that in terms of the savings too. So, what Tracy is reflecting is what would be the savings that we would create based on not putting capital dollars into the building.
Right.
The operational costs then would, would be very similar. So, that, yes, we anticipate some savings around utilities, those types of pieces by, by moving in. As we said at the community meeting, because the K8 school is not trying to put two K5s together into a K8, but we're essentially taking the primary school, which is Poplar Halls, with the upper elementary school, which is Fairlawn, with the middle school piece at Lake Taylor Middle. We bring them together. So, we already, it's, it's not like we have to do the shuffle of which teachers stay, which teachers don't, because we simply are bringing together three schools based on its enrollment. So, that staffing would automatically follow in, into the building and the number of classrooms and all that based, based on enrollment. So, in essence, the, the, the greatest of savings would be those utility costs associated with operating those two buildings because at the end of the day, we still would have the same number of teachers because we aren't consolidating two same-grade configured schools, but rather we're bringing together three different grade configurations.
And I, and I know that Mr. Jordan wants to say something, but I just want to, because, and I, I don't know if this is the appropriate place or we kind of parking lot to come back. But I'd like to find out what the plans are regarding Richard Bowling and CSEP in that particular location. My understanding that it was supposed to be for a temporary location, and I thought that we may be potentially looking at Fairlawn. So, this is my first time hearing about Easton going over there as an option. So, Dr. Boone, have you got an update? Appreciate it.
Certainly. You exactly right. Richard Bowling, the old Richard Bowling serving as a CSEP site was designed to be a temporary issue. The school board agreed to relinquish Oakwood Elementary, which was serving as CSEP, to support the city's economic development at that time. So, they needed the building. We went into agreement with the prior city manager that they would help us locate and determine a, a new site for CSEP. We went back and forth as to whose students are in there. We've resolved the fact that they are primarily Norfolk students. CSEP in general has students from other school districts in some of the classes anyway, based on the particular disability needs and everything else. And so, that was the goal. Transitions at the city have somewhat impacted our ability, and we keep restarting the conversation. So, currently, Deputy City Manager James Rogers has been assigned to the project to work with David Sadler and myself to, to look at what are viable options. We did review, we did visit a number of sites, including the old Calvary School as a potential site. And so, we, we visited and we've been very aggressive and active in it. Like you said, a number of city changes. The idea of Fairlawn serving CSEP is a city proposal. It has not come to, from the school district. That was the city's mindset of what potentially could be used for. So, we're, that, that has been mentioned to me. But again, it has not been driven by the school district because in our educational planning, we're also looking at what are some other critical issues that we have. And frankly, our use of Fairlawn would be the district finding the solution to addressing CSEP when the city made a commitment to the schools by us vacating Oakwood in order to support economic development over in that park. And so, Mr. Rogers and Mr. Sadler and I have a meeting in the next couple of weeks where we're going to review and visit some things. But that's the city's mindset about, could Fairlawn service Richard Bowling? But that was not the district's work.
But Easton is what we're looking at now for Fairlawn?
Because of, so, so, right. There, there are a number of issues that we could, we could solve, if you will, if Easton were to move. One is the facility condition. Two, the 264 construction, the Newtown exit and everything that's going on over there basically brings 264 to the back door, the front door, the side door of Easton. Three, you've heard us talk and share with the board any number of times that we have a challenge filling some of our out-remote pre-K centers, Berkeley and Willoughby because of where they are. The thought of, of replacing Easton at Fairlawn would give us a more centrally located and perhaps we'd have less difficulty with families accepting pre-K slots that were in a center but not on the wings of the city. Doesn't dismantle Willoughby or Berkeley because they have viable programs, but it gives us a place that perhaps we can, that would better meet family needs in, in that term. It is an elementary building, so therefore, the amount of retrofitting that would be needed for pre-K is, is not that great. And so, it, it has some features and some things going on. So, that's why Easton replacement at Fairlawn has become part of this discussion.
Now, your turn.
I'm sorry.
Want to get on the table.
Good conversation.
Get your questions out, because I think I'm, I'm going to go in an entirely different direction.
All right, here we go.
So, Mr. Richter, we, we have this conversation, I think, every time you come and present. So, first, let me say something in terms of the community forum that was held. I think that, I know one of the questions, a lot of feedback that I got was, is this a done deal? Because the impression that I think many received was that this was a done deal. My response to folks who have asked me that is, it's not a done deal with me. Board hadn't voted. For our own concern, it's not a done deal. Second thing is, and I think we have, I think we've, I think we're doing excellent work, but I think we have astrayed from the core mission of why we got started down this path. So, I remember when Dr. Gaber and I first came on the board, one of the first things we had to deal with was the whole PPA and the campus dugout rebuild. And I'm looking at a memo I wrote in October of 2012 when we were having debates over, we're going to stick with the K5, K8 promise we made or if we're going to have the K5. And we talked through a lot of that and what the pros and cons were at K5 and K8. We also, around that same time, had a cross-group of stakeholders from around the city that were working on a strategic plan. And around that time, we had worked on the mission and some of the goals and objectives. Part of that discussion where the cornerstone of proudly diverse community arose from that, if you were to pull up the agenda again, you would see that there's some strategies that were listed. And under each strategy, there were big ideas. And so, some of the big ideas and strategies dealt with facilities and learning environments. Some of them dealt with trying to have proudly diverse learning environment. Some of them dealt with zoning, accountability, choice, and a whole lot of things that we were trying to weave together. And so, as we began to work with you, we had the PPA schools going on. We had all the discussion about, you know, Larchmont and what kind of theme they may have and continue with the work there in Taylor and so forth, Ocean View with Maritime. We had talked about Richard Bowling at one point may have been the early IB program. We stood up with excellence, continued excellence. The Academy for Discovery at Lakewood, we gave it support. We continue to give it the support. We said we were going to make a citywide choice. We said we were going to make it diverse. We said we were going to provide academic rigor to anybody who wanted to come, and we've, we've done that. We were working on what is now the Southside STEM Academy prior to that. And with the Southside STEM Academy, we had said we also were going to try to make sure that we had the best STEM program in the state, if not the country. We said we were going to have socioeconomic diversity there. We looked at anywhere from, in my original memo, it was 60%, but we've had conversations from 70% neighborhood, 30% choice, 80, 20, 65, 35. But at minimum, we were trying to have some balance between socioeconomic diversity and choice. And all of that was driven around academic outcomes for children, sustainability for teaching and learning, and all these things that we've talked about. Doc Boone came in. We've worked on a whole lot of things. Restorative justice, alternative ed, pay and comp, all those things are all pieces of this same puzzle. When I hear the conversation about this, I feel like we have reneged on our commitment to Southside STEM Academy. We have not implemented it with the, all the fidelity that I think that we should. And we have shied away from, is it's not anybody's fault. We always have a tendency, and I mean, we, in this country, always have a tendency to shy away from what our strategy deals with in terms of nurturing culture of excellence, equity, and justice through continuous improvement. Somewhere along the way, I guess last year, Southside STEM Academy became a neighborhood K8 school. I remember being out there on the first day of the year, and there was some confusion because some parents who had children who were already at Lake Taylor Middle somehow felt that they had now been reassigned to Southside STEM. So, as you mentioned earlier, part of the, I believe, part of the reason that we have space at Lake Taylor Middle is because of our, because we have not fully done with fidelity what I believe we committed to do at Southside STEM. So, from my perspective, I would like to see a commitment first, to make sure that we have done Southside STEM correctly, that we go back and look at the at least 70, 30 option, that's both in the lower school and the middle school. And then make sure we are clear on what we have established there with excellence. Because that attention zone then impacts the, whatever we may do at Lake Taylor Middle. So, I like the concept. I mean, I don't, you know, whether it's K8, if it works, that's fine. But one of the goals and objectives that we had was, is that we were trying to reduce concentrations of poverty and we were trying to enhance diverse learning environments. We've not done that completely. So, I think we need to do that first. I know even in your opening, as you described it, you kind of threw the diversity piece on at the end. It's not on the end for me, and it wasn't on the end, and it's not on the end in the strategic plan, and it's not on the end when we decide to go down this path. It was a core component because of what academic outcomes are associated with that. So, I think we need to, and part of the discussion was, under the previous administration was, how do we figure out how to create these diverse learning environments? And the recommendation was, why don't we go hire a facilities, a demographer or whatever it was that we're calling, calling it, to help us figure that out? And I feel over the last 12 months, we have shifted to a, being driven primarily by facility condition. And I think we have lost the soul of academic and proudly diverse learning environments. So, my advocacy is going to be to, for the board, if it would consider it, is that we need to come back and look and make sure that we have a plan in place to implement with fidelity, if it's Project Lead the Way, STEM, Apple Connect Ed, whatever we're going to do with Southside STEM Academy, with a combination of neighborhood and citywide options, that we figure out how to do that with the same level of commitment and fidelity and excellence that we've done the Academy for Discovery at Lakewood. And as we have a plan for that, then that then has impact on this and, and everything else. I fear, just going back to the point that Mr. Clanton raised about Richard Bowling, I remember this conversation about Richard Bowling. I said to Doc Boone, I said, here's what will happen. We will, out of goodwill, like we always do, will say yes. But because of, if you're in Ward 7, Ward 3, Ward 4 in particular, what will end up happening is, we will reach out and we'll say yes. And then we're going to find ourselves three years later, still trying to figure out why it is that development has stalled in that part of the city that then impacts furtis enrollment, all these other things that we talk about. And I don't think we can continue to acquiesce. I think we have to do what our strategic plan says, have courageous advocacy for all students. I think we need to draw a line in the sand and get it right with Southside STEM. And as we do that, we can work in parallel or in some cases, maybe a serial. I don't know. But we've got to get, in my opinion, uh, the Southside STEM Academy's original mission, I didn't even talk about the swim park. You know, we just kind of forgot about that too.
No, we didn't, but go ahead.
But we, we're now five years, four, five years into that. We have got to, in my opinion, if we're gonna be talking about equity and choice and options and all the things that. All of us sit around this table, make sure our children have those type of learning environments. I think we have an obligation and responsibility to make sure that we get that right before we deepen it. Otherwise, we're gonna be forty, fifty years and we're gonna set up this environment. And rather than having increased more proudly diverse learning environments. We're gonna continue down the path where we have, uh, those environments on one half of the city. And we don't have them on the other half of the city. And what we were trying to do is to be a fabric, a city as a, as a whole. So I'd like to see some recommendations and conversations around that. Uh, no matter how courageous they need to be. I think we need to reengage the, um, the steering committee that you had before. I think we've still got one, but I don't think it's as, uh, relied upon and engaged and supported as it was with the original group. And they were part of our broad stakeholder group that would help provide input and guidance in these discussions. And I think that, uh, uh, we need to do that, so that's just gonna be my view. And, uh, and I hope others will, will consider it, but I will advocate for that and, um, and I'll write a memo on it.
I just wanted to add, I, I don't disagree with anything Mr. Jordan has said at all. And so here become those, those timing issues, as you know. When I arrived, Southside STEM was about to open, and so we had to figure out how we open. And what I said to the board is that we can do massive rezoning to make that happen, but understand we're gonna, it's gonna be tight. Cause we were talking basically starting in January to tell folks they'd be going to different schools in the fall. So, and, and, and so I, I don't disagree with, with what needs to happen around that diversity piece. To your point about what seems to be on first, facility condition or, um, program needs. I don't think it's an either or, I think is what, what we heard repeatedly from those who provide the funding for the school district. Right or wrong, was that how do we address the perception that we had so much extra real estate? And the fact that even currently, we're only, only thirty million dollars is committed to the school district for any capital projects. Fifteen million from the SWIFT project that I think is already in the bank or will come soon, early nineteen. And then another fifteen million in another couple of years, that's all that we have in the bank. And so we know as, as dealing with concerns that have been raised across the district about conditions, about. How do we, um, address all of the, the, the real estate that we have and what we need? And what had been years of deferred maintenance that usually on an average of three million dollars a year to do one point, some billion dollars worth of needs. And we know from that report, it says we need about fourteen million dollars annually just to keep pace with what's going on. And so I think, uh, uh, and we kept hearing from council, well, what's the evidence? You know, why can't you close schools? How are you gonna make a decision? And that's why we, again, in looking at facility condition, we started with just ten schools. And there was no reason to stay with just ten when you had the majority of our schools, those are the fifteen years or older sitting there without a conversation. So the idea was to give a comprehensive view of it. I've been very clear with the board, um, while maybe not in this current configuration, but previously. I've always been concerned with the school pairing model that was put in place. I had some real concerns about it. So for me, as we think about the Lake Taylor, uh, K eight, I think that gets to. Addressing some of those, uh, instructional and programmatic concerns with that primary upper, upper elementary pairing model. As you know, we've had mixed results with the four schools that were involved. Poplar Halls and Fair Lawn has had a great deal of success. PB Young and Ty Water has struggled with the same, uh, meeting the same level of success. So I think, and, and of course, we know there's work underway in the St. Paul's quadrant, and so what the future of that looks like. We, we, we all don't know around the table. But I think again, it's important not just to bounce kids, so. I talked with the principals of those four schools and asked, would it be more disruptive to bring the schools back together years ago? Or to stay where we are, and they said, well, let's stay where we are. And now I'm glad that they had that wisdom and shared that wisdom with me. Because with what's happening in St. Paul's, we don't want kids to be bouncing around because of decisions we make as a school district. That I'm at one school one year and then my zoning and boundary changes and all of that. And so I, I think, it, just in my last statement, uh, most of what you said. Goes back to that point that there's a lot of work before us. And it's not reducing in the need of the work. And we have to figure out where we put some stakes in the ground with certain things to begin something moving as we build out others.
Just quicker, and I, you, you're absolutely correct in everything you said. I just feel like we've, uh, gone through a year or so of, um. Looking at our specialty programs, task force committee, recommendations. Let's figure out how to implement it aligned with this. We've looked at lotteries, we've looked at a whole lot of things. At some point in time, I just would like to see us, and I agree with you about the city and closures and all that kind of stuff, and all that stuff is wonderful. And I think those things always come up. I'd just like to see the school division in this board continue what we started. And say in this particular instance, we're gonna take care of the children and the staff that serve them. And we're going to ask the council and the public and others to come along in achieving it. Because the cost that we, it's not on any of these sheets. The social cost and the lack of economic development costs and the other things that we lose both from a district in the city. With our continuance of this concentrated poverty model kills us. You know, we may not, I mean, in some cases, literally. So, you know, I think we need to be able to, uh, in this instance, let's see if we can't get Southside STEM. And ADL and any of the other one, programs that we have already established and we have underway. You would say Dr. Boone has some depth to it. And once we have built that solid foundation and strength to it, then how do we build upon that strength and expand it? I think at this point, it seems like we're continuing to go wider and wider and wider, and I think we need to go deep someplace.
So, I appreciate the feedback, I think that's a, it's a good dialogue that we need to have as a group. And I think that each of us have a, has a different way of expressing the sense of urgency that you expressed. Because I heard that same sense of urgency when we met last time about the schools that are the comprehensive schools. Cause we could talk about that with the other schools that we have seen that have, um, yeah. Scores and whatnot that need lots of assistance. Um, so, I, I don't disagree that we need to, uh, have focus on the Southside STEM Academy. But at the same time. How are we going to deal with an issue of continued facility maintenance needs with these schools? With popular halls and, um, and Fair Lawn? And a, address that issue through the Lake Taylor K eight? Because I'm, I, I believe that Dr. Boone is always putting program first and, before building. So I don't, I don't think that there wouldn't be a strong structural program that would be there. But I think that we have to, as she said, probably move it parallel.
So, so last year, when this was first, as you said, you know, it's been discussed a number of times. And when it was first proposed, I don't think the opposition is to AK eight or, um, you know, taking buildings offline. I think one of the things is, you know, and I said something similar last November, is that what about Southside STEM Academy? Because we have done it as a service there, and that was one of the things, and you might recall, that I said that I wanted to see Southside STEM. Given the attention, uh, that we said we were gonna give it, and so that we are, our main goal, the overarching goal is to create socioeconomically diverse schools. We talked about, in doing that, I have a hard time talking about one school in isolation of the rest. Um, for instance, you know, while it's great, we can see, this is a great overview of, you know, how enrollment has changed. How it will be impacted, what may feed into, and I say may because while I don't have opposition to the K eight. At this point, without knowing what the boundaries may look like for other schools so that we are creating more socioeconomically diverse school. I can't say that I agree with, uh, that our new, the, the boundary for the new Lake Taylor K eight. Will be Fair Lawn and, and Popular Halls. Maybe it's gonna look different, you know, I don't know. We, we, at last year, we proposed, there were different proposals put on the table. One was where we looked at, you know, right now, if you looked at our city zoning map, it, it doesn't make sense. And we know why it doesn't make sense, right? And how do we fix that? Like, we're in a position now that if we wanna be really bold and wanna do what's best for kids, we would fix that. And it's gonna be a tough conversation, but as far as conversations with the city, we talked about in previous joint meetings. How do we come to this collective vision of what a proudly diverse city looks like? Cause now we're at a point where we, I think, I think our school's role in that is critically important. And I think that if we all are on the same page and seeing what that is, we might get more investment. Not necessarily monetarily, but in other ways to support that effort. Um, that isn't just about taking facilities offline.
And I, and I'm hearing, and, and you know I'm on board with this. But here's what tends to happen. Is that three years ago, we introduced a neighborhood choice program that invested both into the community school and to system-wide choice. To do nothing but fall on its face and have no implementation to it. Nothing. It's been reintroduced and reintroduced to nothing. The Southside STEM, when I went down to Camp Estelle last fall, and I listened to people both on the, we want people here. But I also listened to people said, this is our neighborhood school. And I listened to that too. But, and so all of this is exactly right. And it comes down to the, to the ability, you do have, you do have a boundary plan in front of you. It was introduced last spring and it's a feeder pattern that starts that diversity and it's socio-economic. It does, which includes this angle side move into the Norview pattern. And so, it isn't a one, uh, you see here in this, but the complexity of what happens back here. It includes that feeder pattern change that has been introduced to, to introduce, to start middle school diversity. Because from middle school, we can expand both ways in diversity. But what it's going to take is a concentrated effort to do a district-wide boundary change. And that is hard, and it's gonna take political will to get it done. And it's not gonna take, yeah, let's do that until five people stand on a microphone and say, you can't do it. It takes will to do those things. It takes will to get rid of two thousand empty seats at the middle school level. Because right now, I understand, I think that if the right investment into the Southside STEM is to do exactly what you're saying. But you still have twenty-one hundred empty seats, that's moving furniture on the Titanic. Because you continue to spend money on space that is not being used. And until we can consolidate some buildings and show proof to the city that we are willing to make those hard choices in closing where it needs to be closed. Realigning to provide diversity, those are hard choices to make. And what seems to happen in, in, in the planning, and we talk about this too, is that we've got these, like, the June initiative was huge. I mean, it was a big master plan initiative that talked about a lot of this stuff to provide these things. And since June, I've met with you twice. And so we need to, if there's an initiative to move forward on this. And you're right, what I was hired to do has now been other duties to be assigned as we do that, and, and as much as I appreciate that.
We were also looking at successful program. So that's the other key to.
Which is a huge component to this, it is a huge component to this, and so I was talking to our internal group today. We meet once a month with an internal planning group that includes a lot of people from a lot of areas. And what it takes to do this is true collaboration between facilities, curriculum, operational management. Transportation and policy leadership, all standing in the same step. But when I hear that the principal at Fair Lawn hasn't heard about this plan until this fall. I'm thinking, well, how does that happen? And I think, well, if I'm telling Bob that we're gonna make a K eight, and he doesn't tell me that's gonna add fifteen buses on? And we make that decision, I had to sit in Bob's office today and listen to two hours of. One decision here, one decision here, one decision here, one decision here, that has all of a sudden filled a jar where your transportation is so inefficient. That we can't get kids to programs on time, we're running late buses, we can't fill bus positions, we can't do that because of one decision here. So all of these things that have to walk in coordination with each other, cause I agree, program should be the number one. Academic delivery model should be number one. However, we're given on the facility side, the cadence to walk to. If we don't have thirty percent, thirty percent open for choice seats at Southside STEM. And I've got fifty percent utilization at Lake Taylor and, and Roughner. And I've got City Hall saying, why aren't you closing buildings when you're declining enrollment? The choice is hard to make across the board, and all of those are pressure points.
So, so, you know, I, I'm, I'm with you on that. Um, we, we have these dialogues, we have these community forums, we have joint meetings, we hear feedback from individuals. You're hearing the feedback from one individual school board member right now. Ultimately, the school board has to make a decision and act on one.
Right.
City council members, community members, they have the right to their.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, yes, I have heard some individual council members ask questions around school facilities and closures.
Yeah.
I haven't seen any type of full statement from the body as a whole.
That's right, that's true.
But be that as it may, I think we are, um, um. Our inferiority complex has to go, okay? We have done closures, we just talked about Oakwood, we talked about JG Roberts, we talked about Richard Bow, and it came back open again. We are having conversations now, we talked about, uh, we did Meadowbrook Elementary School. We closed off at Winona for a year. We were willing to accept whatever we had to do in order to restand that program up today. And everybody in the city and everybody in the school system now wants to send their child there, okay?
Right.
So we have, uh, as I mentioned earlier, Dr. Boone has come in, we've done all these different things from paying comp to bus drivers to all this stuff.
Right.
We have a record that we can stand on. It's up to us to stand and be able to present that record, whether it's to our city council stakeholders or to the community. My knees don't knock when people go to the microphone. And I have said over and over again, I don't have a problem going out and having these discussions. I've met with folks on the Southside, whatever they know, sometimes we agree, sometimes we disagree. But right now, as a school board, our pledge is to the children. And our goal is to make sure that the children have the right learning environment, and then we have to figure out how do we then negotiate, partner, collaborate. With whomever we have to do to get that done. But I, I agree with you about your choice plan, we, we've, we've talked about it. My fear is, and my original comment is, we, we're still falling on the face with it. And we're still kind of, I'm not saying we're not doing great things that, cause we are.
Right.
But in this particular instance right now, if we were to do this before, in my opinion, it's not just a Southside thing, it is a comprehensive thing. It's a domino. So one domino, whether you knock it over or you don't knock it over, impacts what the rest of the dominos do. I'm saying it feels to me that we need to go back to that first domino and make sure that it is aligned correctly. So that when we hit it, the picture that we get is the picture that we want.
Right.
And right now, I'm not saying that.
So are you saying that you wanna go back and look at the attendant zones for the Southside STEM Academy? Wait, you wanna go back and look at attendant zones in general? That's, cause you want to look at the socio-economic diversity of the Southside STEM Academy? Cause that was a program that we wanted to shore up, stand up successfully. And because we need to look at that first, before we look at how we populate a Lake Taylor K eight. That would have an effect on that.
We were looking at attendant zones across the board. I'm raising the Southside STEM Academy because the, when you look at the presentation. Part of the argument around the K eight at Lake Taylor Middle is due to a drop enrollment at Lake Taylor.
Because the kids have gone over to, right, right.
The Southside STEM has impact on that enrollment. So I'm saying, if we were to do what I think we ought to do, at least what we've talked about doing at Southside STEM. I think then that may change some of the numbers associated with this proposal. That's my point. If we do this first, I think it hinders and limits our ability to go back and complete, my words, what we started at Southside STEM. So it's not a Southside STEM thing, it's just a Southside STEM is, is connected to this.
So let me just be clear, and then we're gonna get it to you, Lauren. The program at Southside STEM, we're gonna put that, that's a, that's a separate piece. But the composition of the students who are there, that's what you wanna look at.
The, the program.
Well, Dr. Boone has the program.
It all goes together. It all goes together, in my mind.
Right, it, it's one in the same. And I think we're looking at that idea of how do you strengthen the program by the commitment of the students. So there's similar conversation we had earlier today. How do you get the mix of students to, one, to deal with what is the school board goal as reducing hyper-poverty schools? And then, two, implementing the, the STEM curriculum with fidelity, which is where we're moving, and you know, you all know that whole story where it hadn't been and all of that. And so, that's, I see them as going hand in hand. I see them as going hand in hand. And, and it's not one, it's not the building, the, the demographics of the building versus the program, but it's the, the program stands as what it should be, and then whoever is enrolled there will have the benefit of the solid program.
Mm-hmm, okay, Lauren.
Of course, I wasn't here previous, so I'm not into how this, so, for clarification, excuse me. For clarification, are we saying that the way we wanna get a diverse student body at STEM is to redraw our attendance zone so that we bring in diversity to the school by redrawing attendance lines? Or are we saying that, is it currently an open enrollment school?
No.
No, I didn't think so. So, or are we saying that we want it to become an open enrollment school so that that 30% would choose to go there the way they choose to go to Gant or the Academy for Discovery or Crossroads? And so, and my question is, then either you're going to make people go there who may not choose to, because it's a very low-performing school. Let's, you know, I mean, let's just say what it is. Or you're going to make an open enrollment to encourage people to come there, because it's a STEM school, we should encourage them to come there. That should be a school that people are flocking to. The reason they're not flocking to it is because they open up the newspaper and they look at test scores. I mean, let's just be honest here. It is, it's, and, and what are we doing to change that? You're right, we closed down a school and gave a year to set up the academy. And that meant the principal, one IB school, he was totally trained. He's getting his teachers trained. I don't know, is the STEM, is the principal at the STEM Academy certified in STEM? I hope so. How many, good, thank you. How many teachers at the school? Is there an ongoing thing to get teachers certified in it? You know, in, in other words, it seems to me, rather than all this attended zone, it's, it's a perfect loca, we don't have an open school there. That's sitting there by itself, there's not an open enrollment school there. But we need to have an open enrollment school that's going to encourage people to take their children and put them there, the way people choose to take their children and put them to some of these other open enrollment schools. I can tell you, I was at Gant as assistant principal when the principal got the idea to add six, seven, and eight. And she didn't do that for any reason, except for the fact that their enrollment was so low that they were thinking about closing the school. And so she got this idea, you know, let's, let's bring the middle school kids in, and people put their kids here, because they'd like to have their middle school kids extend the elementary culture. And, and it was only to get people to come in. It didn't have any other, all the wonderful thing, gets a wonderful school. But it was built on, the theory is, they're gonna close our school if we don't get some more kids here, because there was no neighborhood, there's no neighborhood attached against school. So that's what we have to do, to me, that's the solution, is right back, is what I keep saying. Academics, academics, academics. We gotta do something about our instructional program that leads us to improve our schools. And when we do that, because poverty is not a learning disability. Our children, we have a lot of poor children, but they can all learn.
Of course.
These children, every one of them, they're geniuses in these schools, but they're in low-performing schools year after year. So all of this, to me, all of it's important, and all these ideas are great. If all of our schools were high-performing, as they used to be, then we wouldn't be having all these concerns about it, because everyone would wanna go. STEM Academy, everyone should be banging on their door to get in.
Right.
That was the whole point.
So, so along those lines, and I, I agree, if it was an open enrollment, but I think that's the point, that that would then impact enrollment at Lake Taylor, cause some of those kids will then, you know, may choose to go to, or will have to go to Lake Taylor. So that's.
Parents should have a choice.
That's the point, yeah.
And we should create schools that they wanna choose.
So we know, in this case.
Not an "and," not a "but," that's all.
In this case, I mean, in this case, not that you would do this, is that in, in three years, there's 400 seats open at this building. We're not hindering the ability to do both.
You mean Lake Taylor or Southside?
So we're not, we're not hindering the ability for Lake Taylor to become a K eight and jeopardize a STEM program, you could do both.
I agree, I agree.
Wait, wait a minute, wait a minute, Mr. Jordan. What I'm saying is that the projected enrollment right now, because of it, is going to allow capacity for that choice to happen.
I understand the math, this is not a math issue, this is a will issue.
Well, I, I agree with that. So if the implementation of the STEM gets implemented, to the extent that you feel is appropriate as a board, that shouldn't hinder the ability for, for Southside students to choose to go to Lake Taylor.
I agree, it should not. All I'm asking is that it be done. And, because again, you have, just, just from the perspective that I'm coming from,
Right.
and folks that I've talked to, we always get the promise.
Well, yeah.
We got the promise about Richard Bowden, okay? We got the promise about Dream Keepers. We got the promise about the, the, the new school at Southside STEM, that promise existed for 20 years. So we always get the promise. I'm saying it is equitable and fair and just and good and right for it to be done. I don't wanna keep talking about what could be, I'm saying that we deserve the right for it to be done.
That should be done, I agree, but we need to do academics.
I'm with you.
We constitute the whole school. Yank out that staff and put a whole new staff in. You wanna do something bold, let's do something bold.
I don't think that.
Okay, hold on guys, timeout.
If, if I can, the faculty has almost totally been reconstituted. And because of that, the state gave us the opportunity to continue the improvement there. So I, I do become concerned when the commentary is that we are not addressing the improvement of academic achievement. We are doing that. And those schools that are longest-standing schools did not become underperforming in one, two, or three years. And we have to understand to unpack them for success also takes more than one, two, or three years. The other piece is, I, I, my takeaway from this, and perhaps this'll get us to a point of the work that Tracy and the team and I and the task force and others will have to do, is that we, we need to do something about the facility at Poplar Halls.
We do.
We absolutely need to do something about that. The environment, even as we, we talk about programming, we talk about staff, the environment that the staff is working in, the children are learning in, is not optimal. It's not optimal. And so, we really need to address that. So the question on the table is, do we pour money into that to make it happen? Or do we do something a, a little more bold to be able to allow us to put resources into something else and a better learning environment, which supports the achievement and the academic programming? What I would also like for us to do, excuse me, is to go back and look at boundary options. What does it take to get to that 30%? Because again, that will interrupt students who are currently attending Southside STEM, and it will create a need for those, for some of those students to be at another school. And so, if that's the case, then we need to figure out what would be the boundary options in order to accomplish the 30% choice in that plus some. And so, you know, Tracy and I have said to the board any number of times, "We will bring that to you." But don't beat us up for bringing what you asked for. And let's have, let's have the real conversations around how do we vet the data in a meaningful way. But I think we should be able to do two, do both of these simultaneously, to see what would feed and how it would feed into this. But please don't lose sight of a school that doesn't have a great learning environment or working environment, that we need to do something about that. And the longer we punt the ball down the street on some of these schools that need significant investments, the worse the conditions become. We keep them safe, we keep them viable. But, you know, at some point, we've gotta stop, we're not putting the small round patch Band-Aid on things, we're not even sometimes getting the full strip Band-Aid. You know, there's little round Band-Aids, we're putting the little patch Band-Aid up there. And we, we've gotta be courageous to do the bold things. And I think we could accomplish both of these, you, you know, working together. I, I think I hear a clear mandate or consensus from the board that we do them all with the program, the driving how we get that accomplished. But I think we need to do both. We, we need, Tracy and I need to see, feel that that's a consensus, that the board is agreeing with, a direction you want us to go, so that we can put the labor into what it is that the board is asking us to do and not keep thinking we are presenting what the board has asked us to do.
Dr. Boone, can you walk us backwards from a timeline? Schools starting in the fall, oh, I'm sorry, Christine, do you have a question?
Yeah.
Sorry, go ahead.
Same topic, slightly different. If Eastern moves to Fairlan, what's the capacity there?
At Fairlan? Fairlan is roughly 500.
I'm sorry, the capacity at Fairlan?
At Fairlan.
If, if Eastern was moved to Fairlan, what, what's the capacity or the expected capacity at Fairlan? I mean, the utilization.
So the current capacity at Fairlan is 360, okay? Now that's a, and that is a 3.5, so that is a higher class size than you would get at a pre-K.
Okay.
At, 18 is our cap, even special ed, pre-K.
That's the enrollment, not the capacity, the capacity is large.
No, that, I'm getting there.
Okay.
I, I have to know the, the, I have to know the enrollment number in a classroom to get a capacity. So what's your cap for special ed, pre-K? Is it 12?
How many kids in a classroom?
Yes.
For special ed, pre-K, yes.
Eight.
Is it eight, okay. So, and then it's 12 for, yeah.
And you may have some full day.
Okay. So, looking at, I think Fairlan would have, what, 14 available classrooms at 360? What is it, 16 available classrooms? And so, the balance of general ed, which is 18, pre-K, if you had two of those classrooms, I got 36, and then the remaining 14 at eight is 80, 92. I'm at 115, 120.
What I'm getting at, if this was to take place, and Eastern moved into Fairlan, how, to what extent would Eastern fill that school to its design capacity? And I may not be asking it the right way, but.
No, you're asking the right, I'm gonna just defer, though, to our, our pre-K specialists if I can.
Well, to.
If I need to, either way.
Eastern is primarily students with disabilities.
That's exactly.
And so, that's why we're looking at Dr. James Mitchell.
Okay.
I think there are roughly 15 or so, 20.
It's probably about 20.
20 classrooms that are currently occupied at Eastern. And so, um, all of those classrooms would come over, and I think Fairlan would be able to accommodate that.
Yeah, Fairlan could accommodate that entire population.
So the building would be close to, where Tracy often talks with us, about that 85% capacity. We would probably be pretty close to that 85% capacity at Fairlan with Eastern moving in. Eastern is pretty full as it currently exists, it has a, a full complement of classrooms.
Okay. So then.
And two. And I was gonna, that's where I was going next with it. And how would it work to put Eastern and Poplar Halls both in Fairlan?
We could put Eastern and Poplar Halls pre-K in there.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say.
And we could take the pre-K from Poplar Halls, and then that is no longer an issue, would do we do pre-K at the K eight school? There are two pre-K classes, Jane, Ms. Malinak is saying, there are two pre-K classes currently at Poplar Halls. They can be, become part of the preschool center then, housed at Fairlan. And that would also give us some programmatic opportunities, because we would be able to integrate disabled and non-disabled students in that environment, whereas we had, we struggled with that at Eastern. And so, that would give us some programmatic access, so that will work. Poplar Halls, the K, the pre-K two school and Eastern would not fit in that building.
Not at all.
That, that wouldn't work together.
But it shows that we have other options.
We do have other options. I mean, there, there's, there's a lot of ways to peel the onion on this, especially when you have some capacity to work with.
And, and in turn, by not putting all of those over there at Lake Taylor Middle, it opens the room to have the discussion and see how that 30% can be, um, done at the STEM Academy.
Well, so here's, so here's how this, and it all kinda works together, because this is where those additional options come into play, and you're exactly right. Is that, um, is, the concern would be, and this is, this was always a concern when you're talking about non-choice in the equation, with just a boundary change. You can't do just a boundary change here. And the reason for that is that that Roughner-Southside corridor right there is that corridor of, of that hyper-poverty, and if you just continue to move over to Roughner, you're just continuing that. So that's not, that's not the answer. So you can't do that with, and want to reach your diversity goals, and, and that's not possible. And so, there are ideas that, I mean, even in reconstitution of things, is that, for instance, you know, do you close Lake Taylor and move 68 over to Roughner? Well, then what you're doing is you're shifting Poplar Halls and Fairlan way over to Roughner into the center there. And then, which is, I mean, it's not bad, but it's, and then you're doing that, but you're not creating the diversity that you want, because in that case, Ingle Side then still has to feed the other way, which creates the diversity we want. So, but it, it doesn't solve that Roughner and that poverty line right there. The other, the other thing is repurpose Lake Taylor, it's just an elementary school. And then, look at the feeder into Roughner to fill up Roughner as a middle school. And not have 60 right in there, and then create the program at Roughner that fills the building, and you can have some program opportunities there. And, quite frankly, you'd still have room to offer some choice in that school. And so you could have middle school opportunities. There, I mean, other, other things that you could do. I mean, there's, you know, we've gone through a list of a lot of these in the, in the, in the couple of years that we've explored these options. You know, Roughner used to have a, a really successful program in it that kept enrollment very stable. For one reason or another, that program got, got moved and duplicated somewhere else, and that's fine. It's a very successful program, but what do we do there? I mean, it is a, it is a visible school coming right into the downtown area that a lot of people could have access to. Do we create something there? Well, that's been talked about. But then, but then the domino to that is that I've got all of these schools that sit in this kind of St. Paul corridor and all this, that we have no clue what's gonna happen here, because we've got stage one that we know about. After that, it is, what can we do in the future? And so, holding on to Roughner is kind of a linchpin to start, because it has to be. Once that, once the pin gets pulled here in the middle, it dominoes hard. And so, Roughner remains our, remains kind of our stalwart of capacity to do a lot with for elementary and middle grades education. So I hesitate to use a Roughner in the solution to this, because I think that the long-term programmatic goals of the center of the city could be solved by that building. Another building with really great bones, the site could use some work with some drainage, but the building is a great building. So if we use Roughner up right now and use our ability to use Roughner in an unstable area, as far as what's gonna happen there, I'm afraid we lose the ability to do what we wanna do. So this is why, this is why this is, becomes complicated, is that, but we still have all this capacity open. And again, I'm, we're sitting with a lot of square footage that just isn't being used. And, and it goes to the back to the point of Poplar Halls. Continue to spend money, not, it's a great school, it's not a great school building. That's the difference. And I will tell you that no recommendation will come from this consultant to pour more money into a building that jeopardizes 45 other buildings. Because there's other buildings that have other needs, too. And when we start to do that for specific schools, because, because we gotta implement programs first, that's, that's kinda what we have to balance here. So as Dr. Boone said, I think the answer here is we have to work together in, in the Southside STEM conversation, along with the Lake Taylor and Poplar Halls-Fairlan conversation, in order to make a programmatic move, along with a capacity and demographic and facility move. And those have to work together. I don't like Roughner in the equation, because of the long-term ability it gives us to do, to do great things when we know this is more stable in the center part of the city. The other thing that, and I, and we talk programmatically about the. The other thing that, and I, and we talk programmatically about the STEM program. Right now, if a student wants to continue a STEM education program into high school, you know, because the incentive to go to a STEM K-8 from another part of the city is that I can continue that STEM program into high school. It's a, it's a thirteen-year solution to this. It's not a, it's not just a K-8. And so, in order to incentivize students to come into a program, to leave their community, to go to another community to go to school, they want to see what it means to them and their long-term educational goals. And so, we just can't solve, you know, like you continue to say.
You know I know that, right?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. And that's why I was pointing to you. So, you, Mr. Jordan, we've talked several times. We just can't solve the K-8 STEM issue. We want to continue. So, that's where the career and technical school comes into play. So, okay, so, that's the next question. What's a career and technical school solution? Well, we continue to have it. It's a big funding issue. It's a big, again, it's a big issue around the development of the center of the city here. And so, that has to have a lot of thought to it. And so, there's, I don't think there's anybody to blame for the pausing of that. There's just a lot to go into that conversation. Again, it's tough, because at the same time, there is, there is a real need to not spend money on facilities we don't need, and to put our kids in the best environments they can be in. And so, it's a little pressure on both sides. And so, it is, and Mr. Jordan, I've been talking about this five years. It's frustrating for both of us, because of the charge that sometimes we're given on this side of the table to try to get to the good optimal facility utilization in the best buildings we can, with the amount of funding we have, versus that program implementation that's important to the diversity of the school district. And so, I think that the direction that Dr. Boone just said in that is the concentrated effort on making sure, if there's a commitment to that choice at STEM, then we adjust, then we adjust the plan to make that happen. The plan you see is based on the cards dealt, because those are what were dealt. So, if we want to make that, let's do that.
Let's do it. Okay, go ahead, because I'm going to kind of bring this all together.
I posed this question in an earlier meeting I had with Dr. Boone. Have you, in any of your capacity, when we're looking at buildings and so forth down, even boundaries, have you looked at a one-hundred percent choice high school level at Norfolk Public Schools, and what that might even potentially look like?
Yes, sir. So, we, so when we were going through the conversations last year about the Career and Technical Education Center Comprehensive School at Lake Taylor, we came up with different options for a complete choice, a small feeder, or even a more aggressive feeder. So, how do we balance a community pathway into a school building and division-wide choice? So, we explored both. And one of the conclusions we came to is that we could provide opportunity programmatically, and because of the STEM program in particular. To continue a STEM program into a comprehensive program, because the engineering programs and all those that would be in career and technical education, that it would be good to provide a programmatic and geographic feeder pattern that showed a thirteen-year consistency for your community. So, I know that if I walk into my school in my backyard, in this case, it would be South Side STEM, as a, as a general student that not necessarily wanted to follow STEM pathway, I knew I had a high school pathway for my community, I had a thirteen. So, it was that neighborhood choice, kind of the community choice program. We felt like, then, if we kept open about a thousand seats at the building, we could attract enough from the other school, the facilities, to first of all relieve some pressure of those schools. But on, on paper, the math would show that the Maury, the Granby's, the Norveues would be, in particular, would be overcrowded based on their boundary, about their live-in boundary. We would have too many kids that technically live there.
Citywide choice.
And so, the citywide choice would draw them out to then...
Yeah.
He's, he's asking about all five high schools being choice.
Yeah.
That's what he's asking.
We have never, well, we have never looked at that comprehensively.
I mean, when we talk about diversity across the city.
Yep.
Because almost, when I hear about the middle schools, the K-8, I almost hear like this, this Japanese model, you know, kind of like we're picking for you where you go. And if you don't get in there, then you kind of get whatever. And, and, you know, until when I look at other models where kids have these opportunities, and we, you know, kind of let them get through, make their career decisions, kind of, you know, get an idea of what they like, then by the time they get to whatever high school, they can make choices to whatever programs or we're putting in there. And I posed this idea, and Dr. Boone and myself, we had a discussion about it earlier. But I've, I have an interest when I look at some of these other models, creating as many opportunities as possible for our students that will keep them in school, that will get them engaged, that they can make that decision when they get out, that their career in college ready, wherever they want to go. So, I just wanted to figure out if that's a part of the model, what we're looking at is an option to put on the table. But when we're really trying to talk about this diversity, it's not just about these little corners. It's the entire city. And if I look, if we're talking about really making bold decisions, is that one of the options that we look there and being able to address multiple things at one time?
I would always like to look at an option, we talked actually about this last spring. We brought it up in an options meeting. What if we left three hundred empty seats at every high school? Just three hundred empty, that allowed at least the first step for that. That can be done programmatically. I mean, we work with districts across the country that don't have high school boundaries anymore. And some that do are just suggestions anyway. So, there are, there's a lot of models out there. What, what we need to make sure of, and this is the caution I always say, is that a district of choice can quickly become a district of those who can, if not watch carefully. So, to create a model that's regressive, that doesn't truly allow access for every student to go wherever they want, is not a model you want. And what happens is without a close eye and a watch on that, a consistent watch over not one year, not five years, but a twenty-year watch, that's what happens. And I, there are examples around this country that I won't speak publicly of, to mention their school district. That's exactly what's happened. And so, what it's caused is a, is an achievement gap, a socioeconomic gap, a race gap that will take years to unfold. And so, I love the idea, and currently, you kind of offer that in a sense where you have programs at these schools that kids can choose. And they, the thing is, they fill up quickly, because they're very good programs. The key is, we need to get it like Taylor, and we need to get it at Booker T.
Equity of fidelity.
And then, we got it. And so, and we're working on it. Those are the key initiatives here.
Right.
Those are the keys. So, would we open it up to total choice? I think that takes away a little bit from the idea that I should be able to choose the school that's in my backyard. So, I think there could be a balance, actually. I love the idea of a balance.
Yeah, but I've always looked, I mean, I'm interested in what they're actually doing over, like in Hampton.
Sure.
Where you have all these various different academies. And you give the student a true, a choice as to where you go, and then you also get a level of commitment. You know, that, this is where I'm working towards, then, you know. And that's just an idea, I'd just like to see...
It's a great idea, because I think it offers everything it changes.
And I know they spent a lot of time, you know, almost, I think, three to four years planning before they even went to this. And then now they've got busing where, and very intricate system to getting kids across to the district and so forth. But to that point, we have, we have a version of that.
We do, but I think it's limited.
It is. I mean, I'm with you on that, but even in the...
Even in the Hampton model, there's still schools within a school. There's small academies within the larger school, and not full choices you described. I'm saying that, again, going back to what I was saying earlier about implementing.
So, we know that we've had the...
We have the IB, Granby, the medical program. What we had, the administration, like what we talked about, was, and Mr. Richter just mentioned it, we know we have three schools that have strong implemented specialties and two that don't. So, I'm saying, part of that equation is, you know, how do you do your parallel? How do you get what we have right, while at the same time look at growing and expanding?
Exactly what he said. We have three programs that are actively very different, that are getting a lot of resources, and two that have been left behind. So, I mean, we're looking at it at our own front door.
Yeah, and so, so, I think, if I were to have an elephant and put it right here, it's we've got to start with our program and making that program successful. It's not just about the label on the program either. It's about what makes that program, and what do parents' perception or reality-wise feel like they are getting out of that program, whether it's safety, whether it's small class sizes, whether it's project-based learning, whatever. It might, maybe it is diversity, because a lot of families here want their children to be in diverse environments, because that's what the real world is. So, baseline, we cannot take our eyes off of that. And every opportunity, I would just encourage you, Dr. Boone and your staff, anytime you guys need to bring forth to the board, budget, policy, items that we need to change, please, whatever we can do, because I heard what Rodney said initially, and I hear what members have said in past meetings, they, they want to be supportive. We're looking to you for that guidance, whatever we can do to have that support. But at the same time, what, what I know that I have to help with is to bring this board together on, if we are going to make a decision, what is the appropriate timeline? So, can you walk us backwards? If we were to do something like this in the fall, just saying theoretically, what are the, what are the items that we need to make sure that we hit as a board, so that we can understand the timeframe that we're working in?
As we've discussed in agenda planning and, and other places, in order to pull a trigger on a, an example such as one that's almost fully developed, the K-8 model at Lake Taylor, we would need the board to take a vote no later than February. So, we've had some community input, and we would be ready to move the proposal to public hearing in January, with the goal of the board having time between the public hearing and the time that the board would entertain a vote on this, perhaps the second meeting in February, to have discussion about the input that was received through public hearing. And so, that would give you time to have a public hearing, to have discussion about the comments received through the public hearing, and any tweaking that you would direct administration and our consultant to consider, and then to move perhaps to a vote. When we go much beyond February, we, we have a problem with all of the planning that would need to be done for any room conversions and et cetera. Because, again, we have an idea, we have some general concepts, but if we're going to move to be able to put some things in place the very next day the school closes in June, then we have to have that lead time to plan, develop, put proposals on the street for those who would do the work if outside of us. And so, if we go beyond February, we, we're challenged to make it ready for August.
Okay. So, I just want us all to understand that. And then, what I would like to do is, based on our discussion today, if there are additional points that you want cooperative strategies to work on regarding the thirty percent enrollment or forty percent, whatever, whatever you think is going to be a best practice for that, for that school, for us to consider simultaneously as we look at the Lake Taylor K-8, we need to get that information to you, and we need to hear it back, so that we can be properly informed of what we're going to be asked to decide upon.
And if the parallel to that, I want to be clear, are we being given the direction through this to go back and redesign enrollment patterns based on looking at what would be options for South Side STEM?
I don't know that just yet, because I think it's the first time, yeah. I think it's the first time that people are hearing it. So, I would say that, give us some feedback based on what we've talked about today. And let it digest for a little bit, because I don't think that we're ready to give you that directive yet, just hearing it at first.
I have one question on that. When was the directive given to stop looking at it? Because we, we, that's long been a, an established purpose. And it may not be specific to a seventy-thirty, but we've, that's been at the core of the work.
Yeah, but this has been, this has been on the plate for a while now, and so...
I'm not, that's not my...
Mr. Jordan, I would contend that we didn't stop. I mean, yeah, so, I, not...
It's a continuation.
It's a continuation, that's enough, yeah.
And, and my comment on that was simply, I don't want us to expend time in a place that does not add value to what it is the board wants to discuss, and we still haven't hit a target.
Yeah, I don't want us to lose sight of that.
So, what exactly, I'm sorry. So, what exactly are we saying now? Are we giving Dr. Boone a directive to move ahead with the planning for the suggestion that we have just heard today about a K-8 school at Lake Taylor Middle?
I, I don't, I don't know that I hear that from everybody. I hear from Mr. Jordan and Ms. Bassine and Christine, I haven't really kind of, I don't know where, where you are with this, but I hear from them that they want to look at options for enrollment at the South Side STEM Academy.
Well...
And, and how that might affect this.
Well, then are we then saying that we're going to put this on hold, which means we'll miss the deadlines that Dr. Boone just gave us?
Yeah, and we're saying "and," we're not saying "or."
Thank you. That's what I wanted to clarify, because it sounded like Dr. Gabriel was saying "or."
And thank you, because that was the clarification that I was seeing.
And I, I heard that in your voice. See, I like direct clarifications too, Dr. Boone. Thank you.
Yeah, so then, just to be clear, we are going to continue moving forward with the proposal that Tracy and Dr. Boone have brought forth to us with regard to Popular Hall's, Fairlon, Eastern Preschool. And simultaneously, they're going to look at the options for Campus Stella.
Right.
Or do we all agree on it? I just want to make sure that we're clear on that.
But I still would like to see how it would look if, if with the Eastern idea going to Fairlon, how bringing the pre-K or the Popular Hall's pre...
That's a given.
That fits, that's a given.
And then, the rest of it going with the K...
Right. And what we can do is give, provide to the board sooner than later. We don't have to wait till the next time we meet, next week. But we can give you the exact number of classrooms that are currently being used at Eastern, along with the two pre-K classrooms that are currently, so we can give you the total landscape and what that looks like in the capacity.
And then how that affects...
That would not affect the K-8 at all, because if you'll notice, we've talked about it as a Lake Taylor K-8. So, we hadn't planned for the pre-K. The pre-K was going to have to go somewhere else, anyway. So, whether Eastern comes to Fairlon or not, the two pre-K classrooms at Popular Hall's would be relocated.
Okay.
Yes.
Leave it on, leave it on, yeah.
So, one of the things that I would, I think would be helpful is if we had a tabletop exercise where we look at the schools and actually move things around and discuss, okay, now we have this scenario, then what? I mean, you can do it with Legos, I mean, you can do it just like, you know, draw something out here, and we can really dive in and play with it and move things around and get really creative. I think that there's, I'm sensing some hesitation, because, you know, we want to do, you know, take this leap, but maybe we haven't all, you know, collectively thought through every single option, and it would, might help us work through some of that hesitation.
So, we, we gave ourselves some extra space, because we knew that this conversation was going to be a good one for the December fifth meeting. So, maybe what we can do then is maybe look at bringing a little bit of that into the December fifth meeting.
Well, we're not going to be ready to talk about rezoning for South Side STEM in one week.
When you say...
But that's connected to one of the domino options.
Maybe we would do that, and, and hopefully, as we get, you know, more, more relationship with this board, you're going to see some of the tools that we're able to use. We actually use a GIS tool, like an electronic tool, that you can do that.
Can we do that as a board?
We can make it live. Matt actually was here today. We didn't think he was necessary tonight. But we have tools that you can electronically, and you can just make requests to say, okay, what if this neighborhood, what if, and you can move lines, you can adjust, and it does capacity and utilization right on the fly. It's a great tool for that. We are glad to always have those opportunities with you when there's time allotted for it.
Yeah.
The students are geocoded for this year already, so we know where students are. And it's up to you. The fifth would be, would be tight for us.
Yeah.
But we have the tools to do exactly what you're saying, so.
So, I don't want to distract away from what the division is doing to roll out the communication piece, because I think that's very important. So, we're going to continue to move ahead with what they've proposed. And I think we'll come back to the table then as far as the discussion with the enrollment for Campus Stella. Well, they're working on it, but I, I think we have to continue to focus on how we can keep moving this proposal forward.
But, but do recognize that we shouldn't do it piecemeal, because if something that emerges on the attendance boundary piece to accomplish seven-thirty at South Side has an impact on this, then it wouldn't be fair for us to declare victory on one piece and then turn around a month later... and then turn around a month later and talk about, and now this other piece happens. So we, recognizing that, that, as you said, the February end zone, we can probably do some more work for the middle of December around this, you think, but we just can't be ready next week.
Yeah, okay. And I think that-
For our twenty-something meeting-
Yeah, for the twentieth, we've talked about the potential of doing that, and being able to come back and have a further discussion around that. Now, as far as the communication plan regarding this, what's kind of the timeline on that, when you think we'll be able to-
Well, again, we needed input to see where the board was going, so now we will map out a communications plan that includes what we would put out publicly, what worked with Tracy, to see what those documents and things will be, and then we will identify, you know, we had put a placeholder in, through agenda planning on January sixteenth for a, a public hearing on this, so that would be the sole focus for that, would be public hearing for anything related to educational planning that the board wanted to put out there. So we would begin to map all of that out, leading up to a vote by the second meeting in February.
And I'm, I'm not quite sure about, sorry, do we have like a, a hub place on our website that, for this particular-
We have some of it, that's the work that we're doing to expand it.
Okay, great.
And make it much more visible.
Yeah. Very accessible to, yeah. We have about five minutes.
Get to the long part of our conversation.
Oh, really?
That was a short conversation.
Man, I saw Danny and Bob in there, I saw transportation, I was like, y'all got-
Do we need the additional options postponed?
Yeah, I, I-
It's too many things, we always schedule too many things.
That's true.
We're having good conversation this time, I think, so-
Well, it was a great conversation, but we don't need to now move on and have more.
Yeah.
You're going to exhaust us.
Let's focus on one thing at a time.
Yeah, so, um-
I, I might have a question then.
Yeah, your availability.
Yeah, probably have more than one, is my guess. Moving forward this month, we have a planned session with the task force on December tenth. We have scheduled for, and not determined a spot, for a December seventeenth community meeting. Well, that was the question.
Oh.
Is, one of the initiatives that, and not to confuse it, but just to kind of just lay it on the table, to let it go for the next one then, is the continued research on school start time. We've spent a lot of time in the last thirty days putting together a lot of great information about this very topic, that has enormous educational impacts, enormous cost savings, enormous staffing implications, that obviously there's always some challenges. This is an important initiative that needs to have some time dedicated to it, and I know you've got a thousand thing, to Ms. Camson's point, you do. This is an important piece that will free up resources, dollars, and things to do a lot of the stuff you talk about, if the initiative moves forward. But we need to be able to present that.
Yeah.
One of the ideas behind the task force concentration on the tenth, and then the, and the community meeting doesn't have to happen regarding this, but our focus for the tenth meeting was going to be on school start time. That was going to be our topic of discussion for the night, to bring them up to date about all the things we've identified.
That's the task force?
Yes, yes. So, what I guess I'm asking is, the seventeenth then doesn't sound like it's a possibility to go out and meet, because we've got a lot of other initiatives, unless that seventeenth needs to be some sort of meeting in the community that you guys want to have to communicate stuff. I don't know that answer.
You mean, other than start times?
Other than start time.
Well, I mean, I'll, oh, we, we, we need to have that conversation as a board.
And that's why I asked, I mean, I didn't mean to, not for, not for an answer right now necessarily, but the seventeenth, right now, that's a four-week lead time to communicate with the community, that, about three and a half weeks to communicate that there would be a meeting out there. Again, it hasn't been advertised out there necessarily, other than we have it, we've mentioned it.
Already getting letters on it.
So you're, yeah, so-
Because they look on, when it popped up on the agenda, probably, I got, I had, I had an email today.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll share, that I, I shared the presentation with PTA leaders at a school, so that's why all the emails are-
Which, and again, the seventeenth, you noticed that all I put on there was December seventeenth, I didn't put it, but again, I'd like to have a community meeting that has purpose, and feedback.
The whole board needs to be aware of the purpose of the meetings, when the meetings are happening, who's attending the meetings, and the goal of the meetings, because I don't, I, I get the sense that we're, we're not all there.
I'm, that's why I asked the question, the seventeenth doesn't seem or feel right now-
For a community.
For a community.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think it's appropriate for that. So what we need to do as a board is figure out a time of when we can come back and talk about what you have done with regards to the school start times.
So, if this would be acceptable, is that after we meet with the task force, I'd like to put together a white paper for the board on school start time.
Okay.
That way you have the background and research that we've put together with the task force input-
Right.
To do, to, to have that.
Mm-hmm.
And then, when we have the conversation, you'll be fully prepared and not just blindsided with a PowerPoint file.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
I would, I will say that the longer we push this out, the less likely it's going to happen next year.
Well, I agree, but, but I would, I would-
I'm just saying, our resolution that we passed was that something happened this month, you know, and so we're, that, that should have probably have been the focus of today's conversation, versus, I mean, they're both important, but as far as priorities go.
But, but this is the first time, this has come up with the new board. This is the first time we've had any discussion-
And that should never-
Well, and so, to me thinking, next year, I don't see how, no. I can't even imagine that we would be doing it next year. We haven't even discussed it.
Well, this is, this is-
So this is your time that you respect and talk about this, today?
They were both on the agenda, I, I mean, frankly, I didn't expect the, the K conversation to, to take, but it deserved it.
And, and on, on honesty, you know, ten o'clock last night, I went to look for items, and I didn't see the presentation. So, I don't know exactly where that is, and I mean, I'll talk about that offline, but anytime that we're getting something that's critical information like that, that we should be reviewing as a board, we need to make sure we get in a timely manner, that's-
Right, and Tracy and I, again, worked to vet the presentation to, to, to again address. The scope of it, what we, I think we can probably do, because usually, as Tracy was doing today, we were working right up until four o'clock with the meetings he had with Bob Kleinbell, the meetings with Danny Johnson around facilities to, to put it finally in. I think what we could do on the agenda is identify which topics would be discussed under the educational planning. So we have educational planning, and then under that, propose Lake Taylor K eight, propose Eastern move, you know, propose school start times, so that then the board can be fully aware of what it is we intend to discuss. It is our goal in working with Tracy to get as much information in the board's hand as early as possible. In this particular case, again, when he was on the ground, he was working with everybody to finalize, and so.
I understand, it was a holiday last week, and we all, but I'm just-
So, with regards to the school start time, you're going to meet with your task force on December the tenth, you're going to put together a, a paper, you're going to give that to the division. I would say that if individuals have inquiries about the school start time, we need to make sure that what we're sending out to everybody, everybody knows what's getting sent out, and that it's, it's the same piece of paper. So, Dr. Boone, if there is a piece of information that the board, if we are asked, can you give me more information about school start time, can you give us something that we can send out that we know is appropriate for the level of conversation that we're having right now?
Yes, we can, however, at, one of the challenges is, I, we could end up working on one request after another.
Right.
So, I would want us to say, what is it that is the consensus of the board? You know, what are we asking for? Because, you know, yes, we could send it to everybody, but then the next board member has a different question related to that, and then we're having to develop, we end up developing multiple things. So, it would be easier if there are multiple questions that perhaps we could do an FAQ.
You mean from board members?
Yes, if board members vet, and, and we can try to do some FAQ pieces as we expand our presence on our website around this information that we could also post, but responding to each individual request would take us away from everything else to do that.
I mean, we could also just direct them to you. Well, that's, yeah. You know, I mean, which is what we would do anyway, but if they-
Or in discussion, nothing has been decided.
So, right, so, so that's the general piece, nothing has been decided, but what I've heard here tonight is that there's a split decision on when we will be talking about this, and what are we going forward in, whether it would happen next school year or some other school year, and so, I don't know how to answer the question, because based on the resolution that was adopted-
Right.
Last spring, we were given the marching orders to figure out how we incorporate this, to look for a nineteen-twenty start. So, I'm, once again, in a place that I was doing the work, I realize the transition on the board, but the board action that gave us directive was last spring, and so, that transition doesn't stop that action.
Well, actually-
But the action, the action should have at least been introduced to new people.
Exactly.
This is the first, except for the letters I've gotten, this is, and I'm saying, this is the first time that this has been presented to this board, and this is the board that will now be making the decision, and this is like out of the blue, out of the blue.
It's not out of the blue.
Because Tracy talked about it in August, no, it was part of the presentation in August. The resolution is on board docs, too.
I mean, I, I understand that, but, I mean, this is full clarity, when June thirtieth, new, new thing happened, and if there's anything that's carried over, or an action that the new board needs to be aware of, we just got to kind of bring it together.
Well, and respectfully, Mr. Clinton, we did, the August presentation that Tracy Richter did included that.
And respectfully, Dr. Boone, the level of presentations and the amount of information that we get sometimes, it's kind of like a water hose being thrown at us, so making it clear for the board to be able to consume that information in a way that we can take action is what I'm asking about at this particular point.
It's a different board now.
But I, I just wanted to, for clarity though, Madam Chair, because I don't, I'm not opposed to getting here and taking a decision when it comes in here based on the timeline that's in, I just want to be clear on that, I just think that we need to get the information so that we can be able to take action and be able to decide whether we're doing this or not. I'm, so I just want to make sure that was clear, saying that I'm, I'm not opposed to that, I just want to make sure that we make that clear.
And it, that's fine, but as far as the school start times, I think we need to get that paper, and, and then what we can do is, in agenda planning, is we can look where we can bring the board together and have that conversation about that. I think that's a step that we can take.
That's clear direction, keep moving forward on this to-
Also the case, if you go in board docs and you search on early start times, you can find minutes, documents, videos.
I don't disagree with that, and you know what? We can take votes, and we don't have to pass certain things, but I just want to keep us going.
My point is, is that there's, there's information available, and so, I agree with what we're saying earlier, we have to make sure that we present the information for the decisions that need to be made, but also individually, we have to be willing to go and look at some of the things, I mean, it's, it's too hard, and like I said, the water hose is too big. Definitely, Mr. Jordan, there's countless number of things that we could search for and pull up a whole bunch of stuff, but we need to make sure it's in front of us.
Yeah, but, right, are we supposed to just be randomly searching through board docs because we're new to see if there's something only that hasn't been talked about?
Okay, so, I do think that we had a good discussion, okay? Very student-centered, very academically-centered, which is where we need to be having our discussion, that's our focus point, okay? So I think that was good. I appreciate you being here to lead us in that discussion, and so we have a lot of work to follow up on.
We do.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. What I'd like for us to do is transition to our closed session, so, can I get a motion from someone to go into executive session?
Madam Chair, move that we move into executive session.
Second. Dr. Boone, Dr. Boone.
I think it'd be helpful-
So K wouldn't fit?
I think it'd be helpful to just kind of play with ideas, instead of him doing it, and then Julie and Ashley come up with something, and then he goes back, comes back, just let's just do it.
..........................................................................................